Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to our February regular monthly meeting. It's good to see so many people here. Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Hall, Leonard. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion to return to open session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Certification of the board. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to amend the agenda to add a continuation of the public hearing to receive this evening's public comments for the superintendent's search.
We have a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. I think we'll do that after the roll call.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I move to uphold the recommendation of, from the interim superintendent and the hearing officer to terminate the employment of employee 202-17-01 as presented in the closed session.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion from closed session to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Hello, I'm Lauren Causey. I'm a senior at Franklin High School. I'm on the soccer team, the volleyball team, theater, and scholastic bowl, and a few other things. And next year, I plan to attend college. I'm not sure which one yet, and I want to pursue a career in teaching English as a second language. Everyone will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We would like to request a moment of silence. We unfortunately lost an employee last week, Michael Milton. And I'd also like to add Mr. Elvin Vaughn, who was a very dedicated community servant. So let's take a few minutes of silence, a few moments of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Kinder.
Yes, Amy Phillips.
Present.
Michelle Williams.
Present.
Ron Rusnick.
Present.
Robert Holt.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Hall Leonard.
Present.
Ms. Rebecca Jester.
Present.
This time, we would like to open our public hearing as a continuation of last evening. You have an opportunity to come before the board and tell the board any qualifications that you feel are particularly important for our next superintendent. It is not a time to nominate people. It's only to discuss qualifications. So at this time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward, please come to the podium. Second chance. Sign no one will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say on behalf of the board, we would like to thank the staff members and administrators of Franklin City Public Schools for your input and completing the survey. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that comment. We did get eighty-eight responses to our survey. A lot of those came from faculty and staff, and we're very appreciative of that. Citizens' time. Ms. Kinder, do we have anyone sign up?
No, sir, we do not.
No one signed up for citizens' time. Action to approve minutes. Would you take a moment to look at the minutes, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the school board minutes for the meeting Thursday, January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, a called school board meeting held at Franklin City Hall Building in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes for January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. February second.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there were two meetings on January nineteenth. We just approved the called meeting.
Correct.
So you want to move to the next one?
Yes, please.
All right, I make a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes for January nineteenth. The meeting was held Thursday, January nineteenth, at the Franklin City Hall Building in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Discussion? All in favor of approving those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, February second.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the called school board meeting on February second, two thousand seventeen.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of approving those minutes for February second, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move to item three point two, action to approve bills for payment. We'll take a moment to look over those.
I'd like to ask our interim finance director to please come forward, Ms. Sheila Minor.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, be happy to answer any questions you may have about the bills that are for approval.
I just have one question, Ms. Mrs. Minor. For legal services, are we typically being billed monthly for the legal services with Reed and Smith?
That has, yes.
Okay.
Generally been on a monthly basis.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you get back with us as a board? I wouldn't expect you to have this answer tonight. In reference to the related services that are contracted, I think it will be helpful to know how much service, or how often, or how many students are requiring those services. You see what I'm referencing? The vendor allied instructional services, Infinity Rehab, page three. As well as the contracted psychological services.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And you want some indication of the number of students receiving services through those contracts?
Yes. So when we look at the number, we can kind of compare it.
Okay.
And I'm assuming we're probably billed monthly?
That's my understanding, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the bills for payment?
I make a motion to approve the bills for payment as presented.
Second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the bills for payment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Reporter, the superintendent, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to ask Mrs. Minor to come forth once again to discuss the audit review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Edwards, with us tonight is Robin Jones of the firm Credle, Jones, and Alga. They are the external auditors for the city, and therefore, since the school division is a component unit of the city, our financials are included in this report. And she's graciously agreed to join us tonight to give a presentation of that information. So, Robin?
Thank you so much. What he is handing out is just pages that are taken out of the audit. Have they got copies of them? Okay, all right. Well, the audit itself is one hundred and forty-four pages. So I have made copies of-
Excuse me, would you take the mic and just thank you?
Yeah, I am kind of short. All right. So the audit itself is one hundred and forty-four pages. I have taken the most important pages, I think, out of the audit, and highlighted areas that I think are relevant to the school. And so I've left out a lot of the city's pieces of the audit. So the first thing I want to go over is the auditor's report that we give that we give to the city. It's called our independent auditor's report. And I have highlighted in pink things that I need to point out. It says, "We have audited the financial statements," and it lists the different pieces of the audit that we have audited. And it notices that it says in yellow, "The discreetly presented component units." Okay, the school board is a component unit of the city, and it is included in this audit report. So that's where we point out that we've included the school board in this audit. It says, "Management is responsible for these financial statements." That means the director of finances in the city and in the school board office. It's management's financial statements. It's not our financial statements. We audit the financial statements, but they're not ours. So, and we have done that in accordance with four different sets of standards that the American Institute of CPAs puts out. We follow auditing standards. But in the United States, we follow government auditing standards. We follow specifications for audits of counties, cities, and towns issued by the Audit of Public Accounts in Richmond. And we follow accounting principles accepted in the United States of America. So it's four different types of rules and regulations that we have to follow in order to conduct our audit. One other thing I want to make a note of is several places in this report, it says free of material misstatement. We do things, we do audits based on a materiality level that our industry has put out that we follow. We don't look at every transaction. We do things on a material basis. So I wanted to point that out. So we gave y'all what we call a clean opinion. The city as a whole and all its component units, it's called an unmodified opinion, but we call it also in layman's terms, a clean opinion, meaning we found no findings or issues. So the next report I want to go over is the next page. It's on page fifteen, at the bottom of the top far right-hand corner. It's fifteen in the big audit. If you'll notice in yellow, I've highlighted the component unit school board's column. That would be the column, you know, that we audited for the school board. And you'll see that the total assets was around twelve million dollars. And y'all have a deficit in your net position. But that is primarily due to the net pension liability that VRS tells us to put in the audit. We don't calculate that figure. VRS, Virginia Retirement System, gives us that figure, and it's a large liability figure. That's that twelve million dollars, twelve million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand. That throws the school board into a negative net position. And that's a new rule, not this year, but last year it started. This is the second year that that's been in effect. So again, we don't do that number. VRS does it, and accounting standards tell us that we have to put that in there. So we've started doing that. The next page is page sixteen. This is like an income statement somewhat. It shows that the change in net position, which is highlighted in pink for the school board, is four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So on what we call a full accrual basis, the school board actually had a positive change in net position of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. That includes depreciation and everything on all your fixed assets, and all your long-term debt, your interest expense on any debt the school board has. But most of that's reported in the city side. The next page, nineteen, is what we call a modified accrual base. This is more of a cash basis, modified accrual basis. It doesn't have depreciation in it. And you can see that I've highlighted the education line. That is what the school, the city has paid toward the school education for the school board. The appropriations and the money, and the debt and any capital projects that it has spent. That was the amount that the city spent to the school board. If you go on over to page, the next page is long-term debt. Again, most of the debt's reported in the city side because the Audit of Public Accounts and the accounting standards and accounting principles say that that debt really belongs to the city. So even though the school board might pay the debt, the city recognizes the debt for like school buildings and things like that. So the only debt that the school board's showing on this page is compensated absences, which is vacation and sick leave, and what they call other post-employment benefits, which is your, for retirees, their health insurance. Those two numbers are required to be reported as debt on the school board's books. And the next page is just where I've highlighted some school debt that is being reported by the city on page forty-seven. I might not have caught it all, but they're the ones, primary ones. Going on to the next page, ninety-six, Schedule Five, this is your balance sheet for the school board on a fund basis. And as you can see, there was cash, but all the school funds together had four hundred ninety thousand dollars in cash. Less the pool cash deficit, the school ended with a negative balance in its cash balance of three hundred nine thousand. So you really have to net those two numbers together. The total fund balances for all the school funds was two hundred and sixty-six thousand. But the operating fund had a negative two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And if you go on to the next page, this is the income statement for the, for the school, all the school funds. You can see, again, coming from your local government, which is the city side of it, was the five million, four hundred and some thousand dollars. And the next page, ninety-eight, Schedule Seven, is your budget to actual schedule. You did not have any expenditures that exceeded your appropriated amount, since the city did an additional appropriation. And so that kept your variance from being, you know, over budget. And the next report that we do, we issue, and again, this includes the discreetly presented component unit, which is part of the school board. This is a report we're required to do under government auditing standards, for internal control. And it says that we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we considered to be material weaknesses. And then on the next page, it also says, "The results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance that are required to be reported under government auditing standards." The third report that we do, the next one, is under what we call the Uniform Guidance. This is all your federal money. This is required if you have federal money that exceeds seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's what the Uniform Guidance rules say. And the city as a whole definitely has over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And most of that money is in the school board. And again, it says, "Management's responsible for the compliance with these regulations and for federal programs, each major federal program." Now, we don't audit every federal program. We only audit what we consider a major federal program, which we determine based on our judgment and the complexity of the programs, and how large the programs are, and things like that. If you look on the next page, it says, "We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control," again, for the major programs that we audited. Excuse me. The last report, the schedule that we do, is called your Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. Again, this is under the Uniform Guidance. This is strictly federal money. It lists all the federal money that the city received. And I've blocked off in yellow, the child nutrition program, which is what the school board gets for its school lunch and breakfast program. That's one of your major programs. That's eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars that the city gets, the school gets for food, for the free lunch and reduced lunch programs. And on the next page, here's your Department of Education. This is your money that's funded, like Title I, special ed. And you can see all the other federal programs that are listed, from a million to a million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So the city as a whole had three million dollars, and you can see that a lot of it goes to the school board. Most of the federal money the city received was through the school board. And the last page, on page one forty-two of the audit, here's where it summarizes our results. I always like to call it a report card for the city and its component units, which includes the school board. So again, I mentioned that you got an unmodified opinion, which means a clean opinion. And all the noes means that we found no material weaknesses or deficiencies or compliance issues. It tells the dollar threshold of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's what determines usually what's a major program. And it says, "Audity qualified as a low-risk audity." That's a no because of last year's audit. You have to have no findings at all for two years. So there were some findings last year. You'll notice I've highlighted in pink at the bottom, there were no findings this year. And the last page, one forty-three and four, this is the summary schedule of prior audit findings. Notice I circled prior up at the top. This is just a repeat. We have to mention what was done the year before's audit. And even though we didn't do it, we have to repeat these findings and tell what the current status of them is. And if you'll notice, I've highlighted in yellow that no similar findings were noted in the two thousand sixteen audit that was found last year. And that is basically my report, our report. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer any questions. And if y'all want to, if anybody wants a copy of the whole thing, a hard copy, we'd be glad to send a PDF to anybody who wants one. We can bind some more. I don't know how many we gave it.
We'll have the PDF.
Okay, all right.
Any questions?
And I want to appreciate, I want to say, I appreciate the finance director's office for helping, all of everybody helped personnel in there. And they were very cooperative. It was difficult, the first-year audit. Changing auditors is always stressful for both people, both sides of the equation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Yes. Ms. Ma?
Yes.
Wanted to give you an update on budget and have somewhat of a mini-work session tonight to, in anticipation of the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget on March the 2nd. Staff has been working on revenue estimates and all of the things that go into getting that budget put together, and we're in the process, in the thick of it, but wanted to at least give you some higher-level looks at what we're seeing and things to start thinking about as we move into the budget process itself. Just a reminder of where we are currently. We're doing projections, and we did a projection in December to kind of see where we were ending. And as you're familiar, we, we know that our expenditures are targeted to be over budget by about $500,000. But we also have a saving grace in that our average daily membership numbers, which are, is the basis upon which we receive state revenue, that we're trending about 50 students over, 42 students over where we had budgeted that, those funds. So we'll have some funds from the ADM to kind of offset that expenditure decrease. And as you know, we, or expenditure overage. As you know, we're in a pattern of holding vacancies, operational budget freezes, and I've become like the no-woman around, around the office. But all things being equal, we always approach the budget process as kind of in a zero-base methodology, which is basically to say, starting from scratch. Essentially saying, who are the personnel we have? How much do they make? And building a budget so that we know everybody is accounted for. All of our operating expenditures, we try to take a hard look at, what are we paying for? What do we need to budget? Rather than just saying, we budgeted $500,000 last year, let's budget $505,000 this year. So, but we do like to give you some indication of, all things being equal, where are we headed next year compared to where we are? Because it gives you some basis of comparison. On the revenue side, we had talked about ADM, and you know, a pitcher's worth a thousand worlds, words. So what you see here is a chart of where our ADM has been going, and you can understand why when we were looking at the 2016, '17, at the beginning of that green portion, why we are anticipating dropping down to about 1,003 students. But fortunately, we've had a leveling off for the current fiscal year where we've held the number of students that we had in the last school year. So that's been great for our current year revenue. Staff is being conservative, and when we're looking at the governor's budget and the House and Senate proposals from the state, we are conservatively using 1,045 students, which is charted up here. So you see that we, we love the leveling off trend, but we're not really willing to buy it yet. We're really trying to hold back a little bit and see if that's going to come to fruition. You're familiar with the state budget that was released in December by the governor. The, the governor's proposed budget would result in just under $8.5 million in total revenue for Franklin City Public Schools, of which would have a minimum local match of 2.6. And that's very deceiving because we have a required local match of 2.6, but that's based on the standards of quality, which are not sufficient to run a school system. Every public school system in the Commonwealth puts more money into their schools than what is the basic SOQ. But I just mentioned that there is at least a minimum required match on that number. The governor's budget included a 1.5% bonus payable on December 1st of 2017. You remember that we did originally, and he anticipated a 2% raise for staff, but that has been rescinded from the current year. And now this 1.5% bonus proposal is what's included in the governor's proposed budget. It includes some supplemental lottery money, some basically just a little pot of extra funds that aren't categorical in nature. And unfortunately, one of the, the not-so-great trends is that it held to the VRS increase. You recall, years ago, VRS was artificially lowered to somewhere in the 2% range for teachers to help the state through a budget crisis. And ever since, we have been trying to catch up. And one of the state mandates was that we were going to get back to where we needed to be by fiscal 2019. They made that an early implementation and put it for fiscal 2018, but they have not budged from the requirement that all schools across the Commonwealth are going to that 16.32%. So everybody is having this discussion right now about the additional expense of VRS because it's basically increasing your budget by 2% of your payroll. Since most of our budget is payroll, it's an automatic increase of just about 2% in everyone's budget. There are two versions, as you know about the, the state process. The governor puts out a, a version of his budget in December, and then the House and the Senate both consider it and come up with their own versions. And at the end of the General Assembly, their conference committee is appointed to kind of mesh it together and come up with a final budget. And we're in the, the part of the process where the House and Senate versions have been released. They're a little different from the governor's budget, and I'm going to highlight the differences here, but they're not final by any stretch. And we will have to wait until that conference budget committee meets and actually gives us a final budget. But you'll see neither version significantly changes that 8.5 million revenue number. The House version removes the 1.5% bonus, gives us a, a, a unique funding mechanism in that they've included a fund for small school divisions, which is kind of nice to be recognized, to have a little more additional help in that way. And it increases slightly the lottery per pupil funding. So we would make that just a little bit better under the House version of the budget. The Senate version removes the 1.5% bonus, but it includes the 2% compensation supplement for SOQ positions. So what we would have to do under the Senate version is match the money to give a 2% raise effective July 10th, if we choose to accept that. So again, that would give us a little more money on the revenue side, but create a very large expenditure for us to do a 2% raise. It increases sales tax estimates based on a cigarette tax proposal that the Senate had put in place. But as they typically do with any increase in sales tax, they decrease our basic aid by a corresponding amount. So it always, it never really ends up in a revenues increase for us.
Why do you think they have that odd date of July 10th? Do you have any idea?
I wish I could answer that, but I have no idea why they would pick the 10th of the month. There are some things, well, I skipped ahead. I don't know how to go back. There are some other considerations in the budget that are making us, here we go. I apologize, giving us concern. We've mentioned the VRS rate increase going to the 16.32% as being a consideration, just because, you know, that's an almost 2% increase in our budget just off the get-go. We have received our health insurance premium renewal for 2017, '18 school year. Unfortunately, the news was not good, although we participate in the local choice, a statewide program. Our premiums are very much correspond with our claims, and our claims went up 40% in the last year. And unfortunately, fortunately, they do a two-year averaging on your claims when they're setting your premiums, but unfortunately, it does mean that we're looking at a nearly 19% increase in health insurance premiums for fiscal '18. Another impact is our dual enrollment program. And again, this is one that's outside of the division's control. We have had a very good relationship with Paul D. Camp Community College and a good participation in our dual enrollment program. For dual enrollment classes that are taught by FCPS personnel, by our teachers, we receive 100% reimbursement from Paul D. Camp. Basically, we pay the tuition for the dual enrollment program, and then they cut us a check back. For the classes that are taught by PDCC personnel, we again, pay the tuition, but they give us a 72% reimbursement back. So it's a very good opportunity for the school division. Unfortunately, there's been a change at the state community college system whereby they have discontinued the practice of reimbursing for the classes taught by the community college personnel, and that will be implemented in 2018. So what we are facing for next year is that our dual enrollment programs that are taught at Paul D. Camp Community College, we will not receive a reimbursement for those classes. So we will face the full impact of tuition for those programs if they're continued. I wish it were better news, but unfortunately, we're, we're kind of at the given even without a, a final proposed budget to you, that we know there are going to be some needs for some cuts or some tightening of the belt, so to speak. So staff has been brainstorming some ideas for you to just start pondering as we go into the budget season and give us your feedback upon ways that we can reduce the budget and kind of bring things back into line. And those include reducing some of our 12-month contracts to 10 months, some changes on our health insurance policies or premiums. One of those that has been recommended, or at least mentioned by our health insurance provider, was to no longer allow spouses who have coverage through their own employment to come on to the school division's policy. So if I am married and my husband has coverage through his work, then he would have to keep coverage through his work and not come on to Franklin City Public Schools' policy because we may have richer benefits. Because his claims would count against our claims history and increase our premiums. A possibility is to introduce high deductible health plans. I don't know how familiar you are with the concept of HDHPs, but they're becoming more and more prevalent in certainly the public and private sectors, whereas a, the employee bears a higher proportion of their health insurance costs. They have a higher deductible that they must make before insurance kicks in. And of course, lower premiums because of that particular arrangement. One thing to note, that should we consider a HDHP, High Deductible Health Plan, which is offered through our health insurance plan, we would want to undertake a pretty extensive education program with staff to make sure they understand the risks of a HDHP plan, where you have to know that if you go to the doctor, you are going to be bearing and paying the full cost of that doctor's visit and all of your health insurance costs up until you reach your deductible or your out-of-pocket maximum. One possibility is to reduce our open campus staffing back to one teacher, eliminate the Strive to Stay Alive program, trying to reduce costs of some of the more recent items that were included in the budget in the last two years. Institute extended work hours in an effort to reduce the after-school tutoring costs by having our staff onsite longer to assist students in a longer school day. Eliminating, one that came out of the Finance Department is right now, we currently have a separate auditor do an audit of our textbook account and a compilation of our cafeteria fund. Well, those two items are included in the city audit that was just presented to you. So it seems like that would be double work that we're incurring. Also, we're getting quotes or about to have received an estimate for having the student activity funds included in the audit work that's done here. It would be an additional cost, but it'd be something that the city's auditor could do while they're onsite at possibly a savings. Again, you, you always hate to talk about the possibility of, of rifts or eliminating positions, but that remains a, a reality for the significant amount of money that we're going to have to reduce in the budget. Some other proposals, we did an analysis, and we do pay substitutes at a, a rate that is somewhat higher than the surrounding localities have for their daily rates for substitutes. And so we proposed looking at that. The possibility of eliminating underutilized vocational education program and possibly reducing or consolidating activity bus runs. Again, ideas that go across the gamut of the division. We're trying not to impact instruction or keeping our impacts to instruction to a minimum. But unfortunately, with the, the possible deficit that we're facing just from the gate, we're trying to be creative and at least come to you with some proposals that even if they don't reduce costs in the near term, such as that high deductible health plan, can get us on track for, you know, some efficiencies and savings in the future. I wish the news were, were better, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about the information provided.
I'd just like to say thank you for your detailed reports. Thank you for always keeping us informed and your prompt reply to our questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we'll get into this one detail in our March 2nd meeting.
Yes, on your March 2nd meeting, we'll be presenting a, a proposed budget. Again, it's, it's still in the works and hasn't been completed yet. But again, we can kind of see the, the trends and the writing on the wall and wanted to at least, as we're going through that process and ideas come to us, to start having the discussion. So you can have that same discussion with your constituents, knowing that, you know, some, some cuts may have to be made. What would make the most sense for us going forward?
Thank you, Sheila.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Man, and, and looking at the audience, we need to move on to some good news. So let us do that now. And at this time, I would like to call Ms. Wade forward, please, and start off with our teacher attendants and student attendants in blue ribbon. Thank you.
Okay, Chair Holt, Vice Chair Hall Leonard, and board members and Franklin community. It's my pleasure tonight to, to begin with the awards. I'll begin with Best Teacher Attendance Award for the month of January 2017. That rate is 96.5%, and it goes to Franklin High School. Next, the award for the Best Student Attendance for the month of January 2017. I'm very excited to say that that rate is 98.8% for the month of January. Again, Franklin High School. And next, as you know, we give an award each month called the Blue Ribboned Clean School Award to the school who has the cleanest and most well-kept school for the month. And we have Mr. Tom Keekline, who comes and inspects and does that on a rubric and gives us very detailed inspection reports. It's my pleasure to say that this month's winner of the Blue Ribbons Clean School Award is Franklin High School. I'd like to call Mr. Phelps, Ms. Veronica Knight, Ms. Sandra Bryant, and Mr. Terrence Randall, our custodians forward. You'll remember as part of our teacher recruitment and retention plan that we recognize perfect attendance for all the teachers who, who had perfect attendance after each nine weeks. And we did that after the first nine weeks, and so we've just completed our second nine weeks. And so we'd like to recognize the teachers who had perfect attendance for the whole nine weeks of school. From Franklin High School, there were six teachers who had perfect attendance, and I believe four of them are here tonight, if they'll come forward. Ms. Monica Bowles, Ms. Orlin Turner, Mr. Brandon Yana, and Ms. Sharon Martin. And Ms. Brandon, and Ms. Brandon's here. Okay. Ms. Fran. Okay. Mr. Phelps, can you come and help me give these?
Yes.
Ms. Fran, and I'll get yours in just a second.
Congratulations. I hope I'm doing this right. Mr. Yana, congratulations. Mr. Yana, congratulations. Ms. Turner?
Congratulations to all of you. Great job. From JP King, we had five teachers who had perfect attendance for the entire second nine weeks. I believe that two of them are here with us tonight, Ms. Oris Lane and Mr. Kendall McDaniel. Ms. Francis, would you like to come in?
Sure.
Okay. From SP Morton, there were nine teachers who had perfect attendance for the whole second nine weeks. Four of them are here with us tonight, Ms. Tessa Blow, Ms. Felicia Briggs, Ms. Cheryl Hanshaw Royster, and Mr. Clinton Smith. Okay, Ms. Kimberly Dishman Scott is with us, too. I want to say thank you again and show appreciation for all the teachers who had perfect attendance, even though they weren't here with us tonight, because that just, it has a huge impact on our student achievement for our teachers to be present every day. And we really, really push for that and appreciate it when they achieve it. So thank you again to all of them.
Some of those have won that award before, too, I've noticed.
You're exactly right, Mr. Holt. Some of them are repeat. Yep, and they've, and at the end, we're looking forward to recognizing perfect attendance for the whole year. It is my pleasure now to call Ms. Pam Lees forward. Ms. Lees, Franklin City Public Schools would like to recognize Bronco Federal Credit Union for your support of the Franklin City Public School Division, and thank you for all you do, Mr. Hedgepath, and you are just great, great partners.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
On behalf of our CEO, Brian Hedgepath, and our entire staff at Bronco Federal Credit Union, we appreciate you all recognizing us tonight. Bronco has been, and we will continue to be committed to support Franklin City Public Schools, but our commitment is minor compared to the commitment of all of your employees for each day ensuring that our children receive a great education. All of you have been through a difficult time the past six to 12 months. So we wanted to recognize your efforts, and we hope that our pizza lunch brought you a little bit of happiness that day. Please know that you have our support. Before I leave, though, I do want to publicly thank each of you and publicly thank Amy Phillips. She's one of Bronco's very own, for her willingness to serve our community and to be a member of your board. She is another great example of Bronco's helping hands in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In continuing with our good news, I would like to read a resolution, as this is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. So we would like to ask Ms. Pam Kendrick to come forward, and Ms. Wade, would you come forward also, to honor this person who, as they say, keeps the wheels going. School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Whereas school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of her county or city as may be required by the school board, and whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas school board clerks join with school boards to help ensure students achieve to their highest potential, and whereas the Franklin City School Board joins the Virginia School Board Association in recognizing the many and varied contribution of school board clerks, now therefore be resolved that at its meeting on the 16th day of February 2017, the Franklin City School Board recognizes the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And Ms. Kendrick, on behalf of the school board, we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
I think everybody on the board would agree with me. She does a phenomenal job. We interact with her almost every day, and I get emails from her that are initiated Saturday morning, Saturday night, Sunday night, 3:00 in the morning. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Also in continuation, the 2017 School Board, as February is School Board Appreciation Month, whereas the education of Virginia school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual strength of our Commonwealth is built, and whereas local school boards devote themselves to providing a high-quality education for all students in the Commonwealth, and whereas the leadership of our school boards affects the development and the future of our children and ensures that students are prepared to compete in local, state, national, and global economies, and whereas locally elected and appointed school board members play an important role in representative democracy, as the decisions of local school boards directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools, and whereas school board members work with parents, businesses, educational professionals, and other community members to create and sustain an educational vision for our students, and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia is proud of our educational system and appreciates the efforts of local school board members to make the Virginia school, public school system, a great place in which to educate our youth, and whereas we can all take this opportunity to thank Virginia School Board members for their leadership and support of a public school system from which the entire Commonwealth benefits. Now, therefore, I, Terrence R. McCullough, do hereby recognize February 2017 as School Board Appreciation Month in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. To the Franklin City Public School Boards, we appreciate you, and thank you for your dedicated service to the students here in Franklin City Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
We'd like for you to come down front and get your certificate, please, Ms. Amy Phillips, Mr. Ron Rusnak, Mr. Robert Holt, Dr. Andrea Hall Leonard, and Ms. Rebecca Jester.
And I'd also like to acknowledge Ms. Michelle Williams. Ms. Williams, would you come forward, please? Ms. Williams was just appointed to the Franklin City Public School Board. This is her first meeting, and we definitely want to recognize her for her dedication and service, as she is now coming onboard and joining the Franklin City Public School Board.
Mrs. Williams does not have one, so will we take this picture of this child?
Ready. One, two.
One, two.
Thank you. Let's give her a hand. We certainly appreciate the efforts and the commitment and dedication of our school board. Moving along on the good news, we would like to ask Ms. Kelly Conaway to come forth with an instructional update and an avid report, please.
Good evening, Chairperson Holt, Vice Chairperson Hall Leonard, school board members, and Ms. Edwards. Tonight, I would like to provide you with an instructional update of our three schools. The administration, faculty, staff, and students at JP King and Franklin High School are preparing for SOL testing. Students are engaged in Tier One classroom instruction, after-school tutoring four days a week, daily during the school day tutoring and tutoring on Saturdays. Students at Franklin High School will be SOL testing and end, of course, writing from March 7th through the 10th. Students in Grade Eight at JP King Junior Middle School will begin writing, the SOL writing test, in three waves, beginning March 8th through 9th, Wave One, March 15th through 16th, Wave Two, and March 21st through the 22nd, Wave Three. Everyone is diligently working to help all of our middle and high school students be successful on these tests. At the next school board meeting, the principals will provide you with an update of our benchmark assessment scores as well as the SOL testing scores at the particular time. The elementary principal, all assistant principals, the coordinator of instruction for Franklin High School, and cattle park directors, as well as myself, are currently being trained in aligning academic review performance evaluation, and is better known as ARP, A-A-R-P-E. This is an onsite training being conducted by the Virginia Department of Education Office of School Improvement Consultant, Dr. Patricia Fisher. After the completion of this training on March 3rd, all of our administrators will be trained in ARP, and this will enable all of us to conduct building-level walkthroughs using the evaluation tools provided by the Virginia Department of Education in a more effective manner. As homework from ARP training and on our regular monthly assignment, the central office instructional team, along with the building administrative team, conducted a total of nine inter-rater reliability walkthroughs, and that means that after the walkthrough, we get together in subgroups, we debrief, compare notes, and then we share out as a whole group with the building-